Here with us from Wentzville that I'd like to invite to come up and do the pledge. Will you please come up?
Invitation.
Oh, invocation, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself.
Just one second.
Just one second, ladies. This evening for our invocation, we have Steve Bilo with us from the O'Fallon Christian Church. Will Mr. Bilo please come forward?
Let's pray. Father, as we gather tonight, we just ask your blessing and presence as we discuss those needs in our community. I thank you, Father, for a group of people that are here that are concerned for this county and for the people that are in it. We thank you for the board and for council and councilman and then council lady that will direct the events of the evening. And Father, we just thank you for everyone who is in support of our county and make it better. Thank you for the Girl Scouts and for their readiness to serve their country and you and to be a help at any time, as they are doing tonight. We ask huge returns on their cookie sales this season as they work in the community to raise money for their cause. And the causes of the county that we look at tonight through those that are less fortunate than us, the homeless and the initiatives in our county that help those folks, we ask that you bless and anoint the efforts there and exponentially grow the impact that these funds represent. We thank you for allowing us to be a part of your plan as we, as a group, plan the county's efforts to reflect you in our county and the care that you give us through grace and mercy and calm voices and still hearts. We present these things this evening. And it's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, ladies, we come forward.
You guys can line up. You gotta face the flag right here.
Okay. Okay. Begin.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Good job.
Next on the agenda is election for the chair.
Actually, I'll do roll call first.
Okay.
We'll do roll call for this part. Councilmember Cronin?
Here.
Councilmember Brazel?
Here.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Hammond?
Here.
Councilmember Hollander?
Here.
I've only been doing this for a year. I'm just still learning. Please excuse me. Okay, now, we're gonna go into the election for the county chair. Are there any nominations for the chair?
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Terry Hollander.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of Mr. Hollander as the chair of the 2020 year, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then Mr. Hollander is the chair. Now, is there a nomination for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Cronin, Joe Cronin, for vice chair.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Mr. Cronin being the vice chair for the year 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then Mr. Cronin is vice chair. At this time, I will be leaving the chair, and thank you very much for a wonderful year.
Thank you, Jonathan, for serving.
Thank you, Mr. Uh... We will now proceed with public comments. And just a reminder that if you want to speak, to fill out a speaker's card, and we will have three speakers for, three speakers against, if there's one particular topic once we open it up. So, speakers.
Sabrina Wren. I don't know if I have the privilege to be first because I sign up first or what happens, but I'm here. I'm trying to do an elevator speech on this topic because I've appeared before you in the past and can't get it all out fast enough. I'm here to talk to you about the RZ 1914, which is the rezoning of an area out near our home. It's an 84-acre piece of property. And to sort of condense the concerns that we have, I'm here on behalf of myself, but also a lot of my neighbors who are older, who cannot come out in this sort of weather and drive all the way here. So, let me just tell you that the concerns are, we know there's a non-owner developer who wants to rezone that 84 acres from agricultural to residential, which means we'll go from a five-acre home sites to three-acre home sites. There's no public interest in connection with this rezoning. And it's important that when we're doing these exceptions to the agricultural district, that those things be in the public interest, not for private profit. Let's see. This agricultural zoning is critical to the residents that live out in unincorporated southwest St. Charles County because we have a lot of farms out there, family farms and longstanding family farms and horse properties. The rezoning of this property will create two major issues. I'm sure there are others, but I only have three minutes. One is, we do not have infrastructure out there. We don't have roads and schools and fire districts and the kinds of things that we need to support the increase in population that will come with changing this zoning to residential rural. And we also have enormous water problems. I think my neighbors have been here before to present evidence of those water problems and the extensive water damage. And this developer does not have a good plan for water management. And if any of you are interested in seeing how serious those water management issues can be, I invite you to come out and look in our area. We've just had an enormous amount of rain, four and a half inches, and you can see what the results of those are. So, without a good water management plan and without your investment, the county's investment in infrastructure, there's no basis for rezoning this property from agricultural to rural residential. Thank you.
Thank you.
I couldn't have done that if I'd wanted. Okay.
Nancy Verestery.
Once again, as I've spoken before, planning and zoning, and I spoke at the last meeting, county council meeting regarding this issue, I'm in 100% agreement with what Mrs. Wren just said. It would be redundant, I think, for me to just come up here and repeat everything that she just said. I am a homeowner. Les Jones and I live, we have six acres. We live at 898 Forest Hill Road. And let me tell you about water problems. Wow. To say nothing of the fact that our properties out there are seeded on what is called plastic clay or slip clay. And so, you have homes that if they are not reinforced extra deep into the ground, like ours obviously is not, built in 1977, you have a house that is shifting. So, we are... The water that comes onto our property is not absorbed and just goes on about its way. It's over there. And the little culvert, the little creek next to us, that I'm sure years ago was a lot less wide than it is now because I can't jump over it in most parts. So, our property is slowly but surely corroding with the lack of the infrastructure there. You add this subdivision, these folks would like to add, and you are compounding our problems. We are horse owners. We have horse owners all around us in that area. We use those roads to ride. And the safety hazard there, the additional problems that it poses for the school district because I know, as having retired from Francis Hall District, that the population of the district is... It's overwhelmed right now. I don't know what the, honestly, the enrollment of Daniel Boone is, but there's enough, I think, stress put on the district that we don't need to be building a subdivision. My neighbors to the west are farmers, and they are having multiple problems. And I know that you have received, I'm sure, multiple emails from Alice Fries-Molitor, and her concerns are, I think, very justified. And I just feel like we don't want this. Please don't force it on us. I do appreciate the comments from Mr. Cronin and Mr. Brazel, last time we all met regarding this issue, and also expressing their opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a comment, if I may. Just so you folks know, the petition, or I don't support this as well, but I just wanna let you know that we will not... They requested this one be tabled, correct?
Yes.
So, we're gonna table this, so we won't have any discussion on it. So, I don't want you to sit here through the whole meeting, but they... I don't know what they're doing, but they're either gonna do something or withdraw. I don't know.
Thank you for that. Do you know if they... How will we know?
I called... I told Alice, and you can call me, and we'll let you know.
Okay.
All right. Alice has my contact information. Okay. All right, thank you.
Arne Dinoff.
Thank you, members of the county council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Dinoff, county and state public advocate and county resident. First of all, bill number 4799, I'm opposed to. I think that the property should remain five acres. I'm finally glad that somebody lets the residents know, Mr. Brazel, that it might be tabled. Would've been nice if there was a note put in the county council packet and the communication to be transparent with the residents. Next bill on my agenda is bill number 4800, and that's affirming the Board of Adjustment decision of an application. Now, this is a flood property. It's more than 50% damaged. If you go against our professional county staff, the Director of Planning and the Director of Community Development, if you go against the hard-working county Board of Adjustment, you are jeopardizing our entire floodplain insurance program through the federal government. If you make a decision to trump and to reverse the decision of the Board of Zoning Adjustment, you will leave thousands of residents without any insurance. It would be a violation of federal code and a violation of federal law. I ask that you affirm the Board of Zoning Adjustment decision a few months ago. Now, bill number 4800, the proposed agreement for advocacy and lobby services, voted down. It's ridiculous. Vote down and do nothing. Zero return on investment, bill 4808. Where are the contracts? They're not in the county council packet. That's not being transparent. $250,000 and three full-time lobbyists and a $36,000 paid lobbyist to represent Steve Elman personally? How ridiculous and a waste of our taxpayer dollars. Steve Elman wants a 1% to 2% sales tax to operate the Lambert Airport as a county, and I'm opposed to that also. You gave, as a county council, zero pay increase to all 1,200 employees. You gave zero step increase to all 1,200 employees this fiscal year. You increased their medical benefits and their payments. The police department asked for more police officers. All requests were denied. While you doubled a criminal police officer, Chris Hunt, for civil and constitutional right violations, promoting him to administrative captain, over 30 other lieutenants and sergeants in violation of county police department policy that you cannot jump rank and remain in the same rank for a minimum of three years. Mr. Keen, the Director of Corrections, asked for 38 corrections officers to stop the drug interdiction from going through the front door of our county jail. You said no. This county executive, Mr. Elman, is like a Democrat. He's a country club member spending and wasting our money like luxury of the rich and the famous. Now, let's delve into some of the contracts and the people that are lobbying in Jefferson City that are in violation of the state statute for lobbying.
Mr. Dinoff, your three minutes are up.
And I'll talk about that at the next meeting, but I ask that you vote down the three lobbyists getting paid $250,000. Thank you.
Are there any other?
There are no more speaker cards.
No more speakers. Okay. Next on the agenda is a report from the county executive.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. The consent agenda, is there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve is set.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. The consent agenda is approved. Okay. Bills for final passage, bill number 4798, please.
Bill number 4798, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning a tract of land from A agricultural district to RR, single-family residential district per application RZ 19-14.
Motion to table?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to table bill number 4798. Those in favor, is a roll call?
Aye. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that bill has been...
Tabled.
Tabled, that's correct. Okay, bill number 4799.
Bill number 4799, an ordinance of the county of St. Charles, Missouri approving a preliminary plat for the Hyman-K tract.
Same thing. Motion to table?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to table this bill. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that bill has been tabled.
I'll just explain again. We... Just out of courtesy, I don't support this bill, but we can't just vote it down without letting them have an opportunity to, you know, defend it or whatever you want to say.
Thank you. Okay, bill number 4800.
Bill number 4800, an ordinance affirming the Board of Zoning Adjustments decision on application ZAP 19-01.
Any comment on this, please?
Motion to table? Second.
That was a motion to table?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, a motion to table and a second. All those in favor of tabling this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And again, this gentleman is bringing more information to Mike, from what I understand.
That's correct. We have recently sent, I think, everything I want. We requested this be tabled, just to let that process play through.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay. All right, bill number 4801.
Bill number 4801, an ordinance amending section 405.090.7 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, the Unified Development Ordinance, to add an exception to design requirements for accessory non-residential buildings over 200 square feet in R1A zoning district to allow the construction of metal pole barns over 200 square feet on lots greater than three acres.
Yes, Mr. Cronin.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend bill number 4801 and replace it with a substitute bill, number 4801.
Second.
Okay. Bill has substitute and an amendment. For the substitute amendment, we will vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of the substitute bill, correct? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Cronin.
Mike Herbert, the last meeting informed me that the side setback was only seven foot on three-acre tracks with accessory buildings. And anybody that's got three acres can surely pull back a little further from the side of the property line in seven foot. So, we changed this a little bit from the original, what we talked about last time, so that basically if someone's going to build an accessory structure on a three-acre track, they're gonna stay 25 foot away from the side yard. That was a number that Mike suggested, and it's half of the distance that the front setback is that made sense. So, besides letting the folks on three-acre tracks build accessory buildings, which many people want on three-acre tracks, we also now given a little bit more protection of the neighbors from those buildings. So, that was the changes that were made to the bill.
Is Mike here?
Yeah, he's...
Oh.
Mike, didn't you ask me a question about the bill on three acres, bill on a barn, bill on a shed without a house on the three acres? I don't see that in here, though.
Yeah, the... After review, we realized that the accessory structure without a primary structure clause is for agricultural district only.
Okay, so we're...
This applies to residential.
Okay.
So, it wasn't necessary.
Okay, all right. That's all I wanna know. Make sure we weren't missing.
Any other questions? Thank you.
No.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Okay, please roll the...
Substitute bill number 4801, an ordinance amending section 405.090.8 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, the Unified Development Ordinance, to add an exception to design requirements to allow metal construction of accessory non-residential buildings over 200 square feet on lots of three acres or greater. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Okay, bill number 4801 passes. Okay, next is bill number 4802.
Bill number 4802, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute the cost-share agreement for project number J6S3507 for Route I-64, Outer Road Interstate Drive, from Prospect Road to Quail Ridge Park with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for reimbursement of 50% of total project cost up to and not to exceed the maximum amount of $1,539,500.
Is there any discussion? Okay. No further discussion. Donna, please read the title and call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute the cost-share agreement for project number J6S3507 for Route I-64, Outer Road Interstate Drive, from Prospect Road to Quail Ridge Park with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for reimbursement of 50% of total project cost up to and not to exceed the maximum amount of $1,539,500. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Okay, bill number 4803 passes.
Next up is bill number 4804.
Bill number 4804, an ordinance approving a first amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Peters for reconstruction and improvement of Spencer Road. Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Okay, bill number 4803 passes.
Next up is bill number 4804.
Bill number 4804, an ordinance approving a first amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Lake St. Louis for reconstruction of Lake St. Louis Boulevard, Phase III.
Any comment or questions on this bill? If not, please call the roll.
An ordinance approving a first amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Lake St. Louis for reconstruction of Lake St. Louis Boulevard, Phase III. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Bill number 4804 passes. Next is bill number 4805.
Bill number 4805, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute a contract for services, contract ER 130200090 for victims of Crime Act, VOCA, with the Missouri Department of Social Services Family Support Division Department.
Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, if not, please call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute a contract for services, contract ER 130200090 for victims of Crime Act, VOCA, with the Missouri Department of Social Services Family Support Division's Department. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes. Bill number 4805 passes. Please read bill number 4806.
Bill number 4806, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute a contract for services, contract number ER 130200091 for victims of Crime Act, VOCA, with the Missouri Department of Social Services Family Support Division Department and St. Charles County Prosecutor's Office.
Any questions or comments? If not, please read the title and call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute a contract for services, contract number ER 130200091 for victims of Crime Act, VOCA, with the Missouri Department of Social Services Family Support Division Department and St. Charles County Prosecutor's Office. Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Okay. Bill number 4806 passes. Now, bill number 4807, please.
Bill number 4807, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement with the city of O'Fallon, the city of St. Charles, the city of St. Peters, the city of Wentzville, the city of Lake St. Louis, the city of Darden Prairie, and the city of Walden Spring, and the city of Cotterville, Missouri, to share costs for high-resolution, geo-referenced aerial imagery from pictometry.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, please read the title and call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement with the city of O'Fallon, the city of St. Charles, the city of St. Peters, the city of Wentzville, the city of Lake St. Louis, the city of Darden Prairie, the city of Walden Spring, and the city of Cotterville, Missouri, to share costs for high-resolution, geo-referenced aerial imagery from pictometry. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Okay, bill number 4807 passes. Now, bill number 4808.
Bill number 4808, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute agreements to execute agreements for advocacy and lobbying services.
Okay, any questions or comments? Mr. Cronin.
I'd like to thank the executive for sending me the list of all the accomplishments that were done under the previous contracts with lobbyists. I wasn't aware of some of the ones that were done in Jeff City, and I appreciate the information. But I was aware of all the ones that were accomplished by our transportation lobbyists and a lot of the roads that we have, like Page Extension, like the new overpass in my district at sixty-one, wouldn't have happened without that lobbyist. So unfortunately, in the world we live in, we need these lobbyists. I think they're valuable to the county, and again, I thank the administration for telling us what exactly they did.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, please read the title and call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute agreements for advocacy and lobbying services. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes the bills for final passage. Next up will be bills for introduction, starting with bill number forty-eight oh nine.
Bill number forty-eight oh nine, requested by Mike Herbert, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute a professional services agreement between St. Louis County, St. Charles County, Jefferson County, the Housing Authority of St. Louis County, the city of O'Fallon, and the city of Florissant, and Mosaic Community Planning LLC for analysis of impediments to fair housing choice.
Any questions or comments on bill number forty-eight oh nine? Okay, seeing none, we move on to bill number forty-eight ten.
Bill number forty-eight ten, requested by Craig Takowski, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute the congestion mitigation and air quality CMAQ agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to grant the use of funds to improve the intersection at Central School Road and St. Peters Hall Road, federal project CMAQ seven three zero two six eight three, for the reimbursement of up to eighty percent of the eligible costs, not to exceed a maximum of one million dollars.
Okay. Any questions or comments on bill number forty-eight ten? Seeing none, we move on to bill number forty-eight eleven.
Bill number forty-eight eleven, requested by Craig Takowski, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance to rename the St. Charles County Airport the St. Charles County Regional Airport Smart Field.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, we move on to bill number forty-eight twelve.
Bill number forty-eight twelve, requested by Craig Takowski, sponsored by John White, an ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission's Emergency Airport Aid Agreement, project AIR one nine six dash one 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 A dash one, to repair runway lighting system and replace Pappy's and to accept a grant in the amount of forty-three thousand three hundred and eighty dollars, which represents one hundred percent of funding available for qualifying expenses.
Questions or comments on bill forty-eight twelve? Seeing none, that concludes bills for introduction. Are there any bills to be removed from the table? Seeing none, that moves us to announcements and miscellaneous.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the findings of facts and conclusions of law for the application VAR nineteen dash zero three.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That bill has passed. Announcements?
I have announcements.
Yes?
I sent you guys all an email. I don't know if the administration heard that the, with our collective work with the council's resolution and with Mrs. Joyce Wiley hiring an attorney and consolidating the lots with the assessor's office, they're unable to annex her property. So they voted, they backed off of it. So that's kind of good to hear that. She was pretty upset about that, but very happy that she got to keep her, have no involuntary annexation. And also with Old Colony Road, if you guys remember several, this last year, two thousand and nineteen, there was a three-acre disruption that came about, and we wrote it down. Do you remember that? Well, just to let you know, a guy is applying, I sent it to Mike just recently, he's been doing four, five-acre lots and an eighteen-acre lot. So it happens. If you just stick to what we want to do, people will do it. I mean, and the people in the area are very ecstatic about that, that that's the way it went. So just letting you know that.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. White?
I didn't want to take this time during the body of the meeting, but I want to give some thank yous for allowing me to be chair this year. Thank you, council, for giving me the privilege of being chair. And I wanted to thank Donna Vogt for all the help she gave me, and Claire, too. And I want to thank all the employees. When I first came to the county council, I wasn't aware of the dedication and the caliber